Call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, May 13th, 2014 to order. May we stand for the pledge and lead?
My pledge is to be the fighter of the United States of America and to live all the way forward which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you take the roll?
Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Okay, the first item is consideration of the following minutes. The public hearing and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, April 8th, 2014. The special city commission meeting held Saturday, April 12th, 2014. And the special city commission meeting held Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Your honor, I move the minutes of the public hearing and regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, April 8th, 2014, and the special city commission meeting held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2014, and the special city commission meeting held Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014. Be approved as recommended.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Now, the next item is consideration of the April 2014 monthly dispersment report.
Payroll and accounts payable for the month of April was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll for the month was $76,008.26. Accounts paid over $216,093.09.
Do I have a motion to approve the dispersment report?
Mayor, I move the April dispersment report. Be approved as listed.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is public discussion items not on the agenda. May I just get up? Give us your name and address.
Amanda Wall, 27 Fairway. I'm here to talk for two reasons. Well, the park, but, so I want to talk behalf of the Recreation Commission. And I want to talk about how we're going to, well, should I, do you think I should talk about the recreation first to the foundation?
Something.
Whatever, okay. So, obviously, you all know about the master plan for the parks. I'm on the foundation as well, I'm the vice president. We are committing to donate $100,000 to $150,000 for the parks to kickstart the master plan so that we can get the ball rolling and hopefully eventually fund the whole thing over some years. So, I just want to encourage everyone to buy their tickets to the foundation for the auction. It's $40 through tomorrow and then it goes up to $50, but we're, you know, we're really excited about this. It's been a long time coming. Slow's BBQ is catering it. There's going to be gambling, there's going to be Zumba appetizers at night, late night, and good wine and beer, and a lot of fun. So, we really hope that you'll come and support the cause because we think it's a really good one. Can I have tickets with me if anybody wants to buy any?
Do you have your credit card out on your door?
I know. I did have mine at Square. I did have mine at Square.
So, can I knock, Mayor, can I ask for a question?
Yes.
Could, can we sell tickets? I know you'll sell them at the door.
Sure.
Can we, because I know Devonshire really needs some more people hitting on the streets. Some people haven't gotten their tickets yet. So, we can go door to door still up till Saturday?
Well, we, yes, of course. But try to, I mean, just for your, I mean, the whole thing's a donation, so, but through tomorrow, $40 and then $50, the rest, you can buy right up, you can buy at the door. We'll sell at the doors. It's just kind of hard for getting the count for, you know, for catering. We like to try to keep it as close as possible, but of course, you can come whenever. We're just happy to hit you.
That's great.
Now, here, there are going to be weddings? Oh, and, right, we want to talk about the mayor offering real authentic weddings if you have your paperwork.
Real authentic.
Or if you want to renew your vows if you're very in love, you can do that as well.
Very in love.
Very in love.
We'll be under the tent. Ben's got it all set up.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a, nada hopa. What am I looking for?
Nada hopa, no, no.
Just a wedding situation, so.
Lovely.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions or?
How many blackjack tables are there-ish?
I don't know. There's, I think there's, I don't know how many blackjack specifically.
You have, I think, three dealers sitting up here.
Yeah, there's a lot of people in the city dealing.
That's great.
Hopefully, the police will shut the door so shady.
Only on Saturday.
Right, wink, wink. And the polar plunge, I would like to encourage people to come to the polar plunge and pay $10 and jump in the pool and get a tee-shirt and donate that money, too.
Thanks for saying that.
You're feeling really spunky.
The weather forecast says the water will be warmer than the air.
Oh, good.
So, it shouldn't be so bad. It might be a real relief.
And when's the polar plunge? Friday.
Friday at 7:00.
7:00 to 9:00.
7:00 to 9:00, correct.
And we will be selling?
Um, yeah, they'll be selling the tickets there for the auction. They will, um, we're asking for a donation of $10 to participate in the polar plunge, or if you sign up to be a member of the foundation onsite, you'll get to do it for free. You'll have beverages for sale and we are concerned about people having to get sitters two nights in a row for Friday and Saturday night. So, on Friday night, we are going to have some activities for kids five and up inside the community center. So, you can bring the kids over there and we'll have something for them to do with some supervision. So, I just was able to line that up today.
Cool.
So, we're going to send out, he blasted my family. We want people to come out and just have a good time. You don't have to jump in the water, you can just come and.
Hang out.
And see everybody else.
Real EMS P there.
Right, you have to play away there, too.
You have Patrick in the water, they better. So, we ordered, um, uh, three 300-pound blocks of ice that we sent today and it will be.
It's serious. Yeah, it's no joke. Oh, hi. That's like, this game's supposed to be like that.
And one of the items that we're going to be raffling off is the grand marshal of the Memorial Day.
Is that cool?
So, you get your own sash and you get to lead the bands and the bikes and the dogs.
Pretty neat.
That's great.
And I will give a plug to Scott because it's his idea.
It's a good one. So was the polar plunge, right? That was a really good idea.
No, it's everybody's.
Well, I think Scott's. Just tell us.
Right, exactly.
This is success in Scottland.
I know, yeah. I don't like to take credit for that, so, it's a group, it's a group effort.
And you're going to be the first one in on the polar plunge.
Yeah, right.
Are you going to hurt?
No, I do not plan on jumping.
Plus, a tee-shirt, right? A cool tee-shirt?
Yep, you got a tee-shirt. It says, "I did it, polar plunge," so, good stuff.
Cool. It'll be fun. It's a fun weekend in Pleasant Ridge.
Yep.
It is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Were you serious about the ice blocks?
Yeah.
We deliver Friday.
Okay.
It was, it's not enough. I, like, the nerd in me figured out how much ice we would need to cool the water to five degrees and it was 54,000 pounds, so that was a little bit out of our budget. It'll be more for effect, just things I have out there, so, it'll be pretty fun.
Hi, folks.
I'm Anna Glof. The Saturday after Memorial Day, the Pleasant Ridge Plant Exchange, this is the second, oh, you're the folks I'm talking to now.
That's great.
Honored commissioners, the Pleasant Ridge Plant Exchange. This will, it started back in the 1990s. We had four of them in a row. We restarted them last year. We wanted, it, they've been great fun and very successful. A chance for neighbors to get to know each other. You know, I would be digging plants out of my yard to throw away and I'd be in line behind somebody at Frank's and they'd be buying the very same plant that I was throwing away. This is a chance to get to know your neighbors better, to get rid of some of those plants rather than throwing them in the trash that you've been digging out and you know how valuable they are. Even, even a big chunk of lilies of the valley to someone who doesn't have them could be a very valuable thing. So, please, I hope you'll all come out, invite your neighbors, dig a plant up and bring it with. If you're not a gardener, come and have a cup of coffee with us, with your neighbors. It'll be Saturday, May 31st. It's always the Saturday after Memorial Day and it's from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning.
And where's that at?
It's at the shelter at Gainesboro Park.
There is one of the flyers is on the website, too, right in the front page at the very bottom. It's been up there for a couple weeks now. So, to get more info, you can see at PleasantRidge.org. It's on the bottom of the page.
I'll leave a few of these out here just because I have a lot of them. If you, if you have any questions, give us a call. We'd love to bring more and more people involved in it. And if you want to volunteer, my number's there for that, too.
Would you encourage us to get there early? Because last year, I'm pretty.
I'm not encouraging people because they do anyway. We volunteers are going to be there. We will be starting the intake at 8:30, but you won't get in to shop until 9:00 o'clock. But by all means, the coffee pot will be going and we'll have some coffee cake and such. Come early and have a good time.
Thank you. Don't look at me.
Are there any other items for discussion?
Couple words from the loyal opposition.
Name and address, please.
Charles Mandel, 87 Oakdale. To begin with, I'd like to personally thank the mayor and each commissioner for their efforts on behalf of the citizens of our beloved city. And I'm grateful that you share your time, your efforts, and your talents in our service. Being a public servant is not always an easy task and I'd like to, like you to know that you are respected, admired, and appreciated. Thank you very much. And as public servants, I know that you value the opinions of your constituents. For our part, it is vital that we make our desires and opinions clearly known. This brings me to my topic tonight, the awkward confusion regarding the commission's selection process for the open position of city manager. The selection of a city manager, by the way, is probably the single most important decision that this commission will ever make. It is therefore imperative that the eventual choice be the absolute best, most experienced candidate available. Pleasant Ridge deserves and demands no less. I've carefully reviewed the advertisement and requirements for this vacancy as drafted by this very city commission and find inexplicably that the commission's successful candidate does not meet the minimal criteria that they themselves have mandated. This is a critical oversight and needs to be addressed immediately. Please understand I'm not here to champion any particular candidate. There are many solid submissions from experienced applicants. Instead, my concern is that the weakest candidate has been chosen. It is the commission's undisciplined, unserious approach that has led to this oversight. And let me give you just a little bit of background. Pleasant Ridge is a council-manager form of government. The city manager is an official appointed as the administrative manager of the city, namely, the chief administrative officer. Our city charter clearly outlines the responsibilities of this position, which in fact mirror the recommendations of the professional organization, the International City Managers Association. It's called the ICMA. Surprisingly, the city commission's current choice for this position is not a member of the ICMA. In fact, it appears he is the only job applicant that is not a member of this important professional organization. According to both our city charter and the ICMA, some of the basic responsibilities and powers of the city manager include supervision of the day-to-day operations of all city departments and staff directly and through department heads. And as you know, Pleasant Ridge has departments including police, fire, dispatch, recreation, public works, water, clerk, to name a few. There's, there's a lot to know. Oversight on all hiring, firing, disciplinary measures and suspensions. Preparation, monitoring, and execution of the city budget, which includes submitting each year to the commission a proposed budget package with options and recommendations for its consideration and possible approval. Main technical advisor to the commission on overall governmental operations. City managers also involved in public relations such as meeting with citizens, citizen groups, businesses, and other stakeholders. And the city manager has to operate the city with a professional understanding of how all the city functions and departments operate together to their best effect. Unfortunately, even a generous reading of the chosen candidate's resume will reveal that he has had little, if any, experience in any of these important areas. Again, he's the only applicant without the relevant experience in these crucial areas. I'd like to underscore that one of the most important responsibilities that I just highlighted is the need for a city manager to produce a budget. The chosen candidate has never prepared an annual city budget, nor he's ever been involved in a city audit. Our new mayor and city commission will need all the help that they can get from an experienced manager in this position. Now, please allow me to quote directly from the job description written by the city commission. Quote, "The candidate shall have five or more years of government experience as city manager, assistant city manager, or in a department management role." According to the chosen candidate's resume, your candidate does not fulfill this important requirement, the requirement that you asked for. Another area where experience matters is in contract negotiations. We have a unionized police department and contractor fire protection with a unionized fire department. Negotiation skills are required. Fortunately for the applicants have had intense negotiating experience with multiple unions. Anyone who's ever tried to participate in union negotiations knows how difficult and costly these can be. We need a city manager with rich experience in this area. Not only do Pleasant Ridge and the city commission deserve the best city manager available, the loyal and hard-working employees of our city do, too. It would be an injustice to hire an inexperienced city manager that would be dependent upon them for everything, particularly with the multitude of experienced candidates available. In summary, the chosen candidate does not meet the requirements that you yourselves established and it does not have the experience needed to lead our community into the future. I strongly urge the commission to reflect carefully upon this important job and select the most able and experienced candidate available. That's it, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone?
Jerry Bushy, 20 Oakdale. I agree with everything that Mr. Mandel had to say there and we have set up a petition drive to, basically, you know, follow what Mr. Mandel has said. We have currently, I think it's 75. We are, goal is to reach 355, which would give us an opportunity to put a ballot language. So, I'd like to submit this to the city clerk, make this permanent part of the record. If I could, please?
Could you read Mr. Aron's letter?
She can do it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes?
I'm sure.
Read the undersigned reflective request of the city commission defer voting on the appointment of a new city manager pending further input by the public on this matter. We oppose the appointment of the new city manager being considered because he does not meet the criteria of the position as outlined in the advertisement for the position that was created by the city commission. And a decision to hire him has apparently been made at a study session without sufficient public input or proper process.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Zuppan, 18 Camerton. Question for me is if we're hiring somebody who is not experienced, questionable qualification, what are we going to pay them? Are we going to pay them city manager money for playing our experience? I think that's something that you need to explain to people when you make the decision and hopefully it'll make sense.
Thank you.
Armado Cabazos, 18 Norwood. The only comment I would have is, as what was presented and expressed to the commission and mayor, in respect to the requirements, I stood before you, I think it was December 10th, Jay Foreman was not here that evening. And that, that time, the commission was looking to hire an interim and I spoke at that time opposing it. One, we had the individuals here that had the experience. We didn't need to spend the money, which was going, at that time, was, I think, forecasted between $90,000 to $100,000. And so, as a community member, expressed those issues and remember precisely, which befuddles me at this point, if, if this council's going to recommend the current candidate to become the city manager, if that person doesn't have the experience, that at that meeting, every one of you said, except Jay, because he wasn't here, about how important it was to have the experience. And Mr. Scott, you specifically said that when I asked what would the candidate need and you said you had reviewed the steps and what we needed and we had to have experience because the critical aspect at that time was the budget. And we had to have that experience. So, it befuddles me from the standpoint now that if we don't have a candidate, that, again, I haven't read the requirements and the job description in a while, but if in fact that has changed, why would, why would that even come close to happening? I can't believe there aren't candidates out there from a search standpoint that we could not find in this city. And currently, if in fact we had to wait another month or two months or three months, we know interim city manager that Scott has fulfilled and previously and during this particular point in time could do it. So, I say, what's the hurry if we don't have a proper candidate? And the only thing that would happen is it would harm the community, not, again, having the proper candidate in place, that you expressed on December 10th how important it was to have all of this experience in all these particular areas that Mr. Mandel just went over. And now, it seems we have a dichotomy if in fact we're saying we don't need that. So, befuddle. Thank you very much.
Let me, are there any other? Just, I feel necessary at least just to go through the process that was, that we underwent for this position. We went through a process that had been recommended by the previous commission and that was to go through the Michigan Municipal League, which is a standard way of doing a city manager search. We were assigned a consultant with the Michigan Municipal League. We signed a contract with them. We met with the consultant. We worked out a position description that was then posted by the Michigan Municipal League for a period of time. They received 36 applicants. A woman named Joyce Parker, who's now city manager in Allen Park and has done a lot of work on being a consultant, went through those 36 applicants, did a grid based on the requirements that we had set forth, based on experience and a number of other characteristics in terms of strategic planning and some of the specific experiences and skills that we wanted. She set out that grid. She went through the 36 candidates, came up with nine finalists, with five recommended finalists. We then went through a process of having a community meet and greet, which I hope some of you might have attended. We also, we posted the resumes on the website. We had a community meet and greet. We had open interviews, which I'm sorry to say that many of you did not attend. I would be very interested if any of you want to come and tell us that you did. We went through that process. Jim Brockman was one of the people selected by the consultants, based on experience, based on all the criteria, based on everything that you all have criticized. And going through those selections, we undertook our responsibility and we selected Jim Brockman. I appreciate that you're going to have a petition. I appreciate that everybody is upset, but we have chosen what we feel, who we feel is the best candidate and we are proceeding to work out contract negotiations with Jim Brockman. So, are there any other items for public discussion? Any? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I understand your process and I do say that the prior city commission recommended going through MML, but I think you're missing the whole point here is that you did have a meet and greet. After that, it was a interview process that was limited to no questions from the residents of this community. It was directed with you. You have put more time and effort into place structures over Gainesboro Park than you have citizens groups. You're smiling, but it's not true. You've had citizens groups, you've had public discussions, you have open meetings of direction. None of that has been accomplished for this process and I think this is way more important.
Thanks. Is there anything else?
Just one question, sir. For the Municipal League there, were there other, other things that you required other than what showed up in the actual posting? Other qualifications or that was, the posting was it?
And through a series of workshops that were open to the public, we, we reviewed the process with Joyce and she provided us with recommendations.
And how is it that you ended up with the only one with no experience in any of those areas as your candidate? I don't really understand that.
We feel.
I think there's a lack of transparency here. I mean, you ran on transparency.
Okay.
And we're not feeling, we're not seeing it at all.
I think I would simply say we believe that there is experience there that is relevant to the job description and relevant to the job. That's all that I can say.
All right, thank you.
And I believe, and one other thing, we feel that the experience that Jim brings, combined with the experience that's already on staff, will produce a tremendous team that brings together all the characteristics that we need. We're getting a lot of skills that we don't have in this city right now.
It also depends what you're planning to do with those skills. I mean, just because you're elected doesn't mean that you have a mandate to do the complete streets, for example, or any of, any of the other things that you might be working on. So, I would request that you continue to try to reach out to people.
We definitely are.
Thank you.
Becky Huber, 13 Allen Park. I have been out of town an awful lot, so I did not have an opportunity to come to your meet and greets, but as I understood them, they were not necessarily a forum for people to ask questions of the candidates. And I guess, I happened to have just driven in this afternoon from Grand Rapids and I came because this was my question. I don't know Mr. Brockman, except that I talked to him when he was here as a concerned citizen. He seems like a very nice, interested, interested in the community and a good guy. Obviously, he's a resident. That's a plus. But this is my question. What skills do you see that he brings that we don't already have? You just said that he had some skills that we are lacking. What are they? And along with that, if the Michigan Municipal League supplied 36 candidates and aren't they supposed to be city managers or some such thing? Why do we have a person who, as I read his resume, and granted, I read it in Woodward Talk, so maybe there's more to it, what are his skills? Why do we think he's the best candidate of the 36 besides the fact that the lady in Allen Park felt that he was a good candidate? Now, I'm not negating anything that you felt about him. I just think we, in your effort for transparency, ought to, you ought to inform us. And part of this is my fault. I admit that I haven't been here. But I know that there are some other residents who are equally confused. So, if you can help with that, maybe you can clear it all up. I don't know. This guy may be terrific. But the one thing that you said over and over again was, we had to have experience, we had to have someone who did the budget. Well, as I look at his credentials, other than the fact that he's very enthusiastic about whatever you all want to do out on Woodward, I didn't get anything else. And I'm sorry if that sounds. But I know that there are some other residents who are equally confused. So if you can help with that, maybe you can clear it all up. I don't know. This guy may be terrific. But the one thing that you said over and over again was, we had to have experience, we had to have someone who did the budget. Well, as I look at his credentials, other than the fact that he's very enthusiastic about whatever you all want to do out on Woodward, I didn't get anything else. And I'm sorry if that sounds negative. I don't mean it to be that way. I just mean, I read. Okay, fine, this is a starting point for him. He pretty much implied, although maybe I read it differently, that this was a starting point. He didn't sound like he intended to be here for the next sixty years. There's nothing wrong with that either. But he was looking forward to Woodward development and all that. And I have to admit, I'm not at all interested in the Woodward development. I don't know how many people are. I know that you embrace it. I'll probably be dead before it happens. So that's all fine and good. But I just want you to tell me why I should think, oh, this is a fabulous thing. I've lived more, through more city managers in this town than probably anybody up there. Well, maybe not Charles. But, you know, and I know that they come and they go and all of that. So make me feel better. And if you can make me feel better, you'll probably make a whole lot of other people feel better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cambridge twenty Oakdale. I'm just wondering why before contract negotiations were conducted, why this was released to the press, put in the paper and everything before it was even a done deal? I mean, you select him before you...
When a selection is made, obviously it becomes public.
Right, that you haven't done your contact, you haven't done your negotiations.
The issue is that the meeting where we made our selection was an open meeting. And so the minute that the selection was made, we wanted to provide everyone the same knowledge that the people had that were at the meeting. So it needed to go out there so that the message from the city was given consistently, not just a couple of people in the meeting, but everyone heard the same thing that was said in the open meeting. That's why we...
Well, just the article, it seemed like everything was a done deal before you even had, you know, the contract negotiated.
Right. We don't write the article, that's the...
We had that issue, we had that issue at the end.
Well, I'm sure you issued a press release. I'm sure you talked to them, because I saw quotes there from it. So, I mean, really, you knew that you were giving this to the public.
Well, there was, there was an open workshop announced where a decision would be made so that the public, so that the press already knew that. So immediately, they would be calling, there wasn't a press release per se, it was information coming out of that particular...
So you called, you called the reporter and told them?
Our city clerk made that information available to them. And then they followed up with...
It just seems odd that it was released to the press before it was even a done deal. That's what my concern is. But thank you.
No, thank you.
Yes, please.
I'm Betty Howe. I live at thirty-one Cambridge, and I find this very interesting. I have been gone from our lovely city for four months, but we had cable television there. And so I got to watch several times, actually. Lot different than just sitting here. And you only hear it once. I think Scott has done a fantastic job in the interim period, and I know you're all grateful for that. But I think there's something being forgotten by the speakers, who are wearing lots of hearts on lots of sleeves tonight. You guys won. As someone who worked and elected a governor from this city, Jim Blanchard, when you win, you get to make decisions, and you're expected to. And you will be given credit for the good ones, and you'll be blamed for the bad ones. And I don't know, when you look at all of the different candidates for city manager, I think it's amazing that we had five fine people who are willing to come to a tiny city, where we probably don't have as much money to spread around, not only in projects, but even in salaries. So I think it's time to go ahead. You seem to have had, in my words, as I've communicated to the mayor, a lot of transparency, surely a lot more than was happening with previous administrations. And I think that you'll rise or fall on the value of your decisions, and I encourage you to go ahead and put it into motion. Besides which, it's good to see someone who went to Michigan State above to take a job here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That mail needed to be hit. Anything else? Okay. Next section is to move on to governmental reports. Do we have the chief? Do we have nothing? No governmental reports? Next section is consideration of the city commission liaison reports. Since we've already kind of touched upon this, I just wanted to at least update people on the current status, just to update you on the city manager hiring process, so that everybody is aware of that. Last month, we announced our selection of James Brockman, and we named a negotiating committee to start the process of developing the contract. The negotiating committee consisted of myself, Brett Scott, Commissioner Scott, and our city attorney, Charles Cooper. We have been meeting as a negotiating committee. We've also met in commission workshops. We've had a lot of good discussion, and due to a couple of different delays, we had hoped to have finalized a contract for tonight's meeting. That is not the case, but we anticipated the process will be completed this week. And we are on schedule to have a special meeting to approve the contract on May twenty-seventh at seven o'clock PM. So I wanted to make that announcement, so that people can put that on their calendar. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Foreman for your liaison report.
Yes. As always, I have a few updates from the Ferndale School District. First, an update on the search for the new superintendent. There's obviously a lot that has to happen between now and June thirtieth, which is when Gary Meyer will be retiring. So I thought I'd show the timeline quickly. First off, the deadline for applications to be considered is Tuesday, June third. Candidate screening will take place on June fifth. Public interviews will be done on Saturday, June seventh. Second, interviews and visits to the candidate's district will take place that following week. Selection of a fellow candidate will be on Thursday, June twelfth, and the start date is set for no later than July first. Next, I would like to highlight some impressive recent student achievements and recognitions. Obviously, the district is made up of more than just Pleasant Ridge students, but I'm a bit biased, so I'm going to focus on those students tonight. I'll start by mentioning something cool that a few of our middle schoolers are being recognized for, and that's that four of our students were chosen to represent Ferndale Middle School in this year's Detroit Symphony Orchestra Honors Band, and that was on April twenty-eighth. The students rehearsed during the day and then performed a concert side by side with DSO musicians on the stage of Orchestra Hall in the afternoon. So bravo and congratulations to those talented kids that were able to do that. And one of them was PR's own Sophia Lampier, who plays the flute. Next, I'd like to tell everyone that some serious congratulations are in order for a few students. Maddie Parks in the tenth grade, Cara Benner and Drew McElroy in the eleventh grade. This elite group of achievers, as well as nine of their fellow Ferndale High School students, earned a four-point grade average through the entire year. They were rewarded with a lunch at Como's in Ferndale with Gary Meyer, superintendent, as well as their principal, Lisa Williams. So great job, Cara. Great job, Drew. And great job, Maddie. Keep it up. Also, some news about a successful fundraiser that took place this past weekend. It was Saturday, May tenth, amid the citywide garage sale mayhem that we had going on here. There was a benefit that took place at the high school that was called Dodge Drives Fundraiser. Participants over eighteen years of age could sign up and take a car for a quick test drive. And in exchange for that, twenty dollars would be donated to the schools as part of the booster program. This has been done for the last two years. It's been very successful, so much so that they're very close to being able to buy a new scoreboard for the baseball team.
Wow.
Quickly, upcoming events between now and our next city commission meeting. Again, I cover these every time. They are on the website, ferndalschools.org, but I just think it's of value to go through a few of them in case anyone's interested. So tomorrow, May fourteenth, will be a dance concert that'll take place at Ferndale High School Auditorium. It's for the high school in Casa. This Thursday, May fifteenth, seven thirty, is the Ferndale High School Choir Concert. Nineteenth is the External Relations Committee meeting at Harding Administration Building, and that's the committee that's responsible for advocating for proper school funding. On the twentieth, at seven thirty PM, will be an orchestra concert at the high school auditorium. Twenty-first, at seven PM, there will be a Ferndale Middle School Choir and Dance Concert at the auditorium at the high school. And on the twenty-second, twenty-third, JFK Elementary Second and Third Grade Camp will take place at Belle Isle on the twenty-second and Beverly Park on the twenty-third. That's in Beverly Hills. For any parents that still need to get some additional volunteer hours, this is a really good way to do that. You can really rack them up quickly if you volunteer at one of these camps. And there are more that I'll mention in a second for the other grades. Monday, five twenty-sixth, May twenty-sixth, of course, Memorial Day, so there are no classes. Twenty-seventh is a school board meeting, seven o'clock at Harding. Twenty-eighth is a very busy day. Six PM is a Roosevelt kindergarten kickoff event. Seven PM is the Ferndale High School graduation. So as one book closes and others opens, or the reverse. The twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, the sixth grade camp will take place for those three days. Again, volunteer hours if you need them. Monday, June second, another External Relations Committee meeting. From June fourth through the sixth, JFK grades five, four through five camps are happening. And last but not least, our favorite day, June thirteenth. That's the last day of school. If we had a band member here with a snare drum, I would have asked for a drum roll. So again, you can always find these events listed on the website for Ferndale Schools, ferndalschools.org. And if you'd like to sign up for e-newsletters, you can do that there as well. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Perry, Planning and DDA.
Thank you. The Planning Commission and DDA did not meet in April, but the next meeting is coming up possibly Monday or on the nineteenth?
Yeah, I think we're gonna...
Okay, on May...
Enough for Monday, so plan for that. She gets it from outside.
Great. So it should be Monday, May nineteenth. And then, you know, there'll be a couple different topics. One is, we're still working on very much finalizing the city master plan. And then also, the topic, Cork has revised their plan for outdoor dining solutions, and so we're going to look at that on Monday as well. The DDA will be looking at the citywide picnic sponsored, that, you know, happened over there in Roosevelt Park, and I know they had possibly talked about it, or Stevenson Park, and they talked about possibly other locations to consider as well. The first one, the family picnic will be July thirtieth, and then September seventeenth will be the concert in the park. And then Mayor Metzger and I went to a Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis Meeting with the, it was Parsons Brinkerhoff and all of their different consultants, and they were talking about how transit, you know, is going to, you know, different ways that it may travel through our area. And the bus rapid transit is something that, you know, it may not happen, you know, in the next year or two, but it is something that is definitely, something that the city, the metro area, and the state see as a very important initiative, as well as the federal government. And then also, the Woodward Avenue Action Association has a really wonderful fundraiser. It is their third annual sunflower program. They try to beautify Woodward along, this is in the Palmer Park area. And it's a wonderful initiative that, I'm blanking on his name right now, but the gentleman who own Blossoms put this together. And they helped plant wonderful sunflowers all around Seven Mile and Woodward, and really helped make it beautiful. And so with the donation of a hundred and fifty dollars, you can have a wonderful tour of the Turkle House and a wonderful evening there, which is that great Frank Lloyd Wright House that's right there on Seven Mile. So it is, I know, it's beautiful. And these go towards really good, the money goes, funding goes towards really great things, including, you know, helping save the Highland Park Ford Model T plant, and, you know, the renovations on that, as well as many other projects along Woodward Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission and CAC.
Sure. Couple of quick ones for the Historical Commission, just to remind everybody that we have the home and garden tour for June seventh, from ten to four. Should be a great event, and just pray for sunshine for everyone.
Yes.
Or lots of umbrellas, I guess. And then for the CAC, they have two meetings left. There's been a great community effort to define issues around the budget. A lot of discussion on the last meeting to describe recommendations that we'll hear in June and respond to, and a lot of what they've said, you know, we're looking at for our fifteen sixteen budget. So looking forward to getting the full report from them in early June. They have two meetings left, and that's it.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Krizak, Recreation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a few events in review. And this dovetails to what Amanda started discussing earlier about the park project and the great work that the foundation's doing to raise money for the park improvements. On May seventh, in conjunction with the foundation, the Recreation Commission hosted Kickstart the Park event in Gainesboro Park. It was a little, I understand, I was unable to attend, but I understand it was a little overcast, but there was still some good input given. I know my wife and my children were there and gave rave reviews. And I made good on a campaign promise to my daughter that she could help with Gainesboro Park. So that's at least one promise I've kept. I want to thank Scott for the work he's done on compiling the survey. There's a survey that's online right now. You can access it through the city website, and it's a survey of potential playground equipment, not specific equipment, more preferences as far as whether your little one or your children prefer climbing activities, or sliding activities, or swinging activities. The Recreation Commission, at its May meeting, will utilize this information to make a decision on the playground equipment. So please, if you're at all interested in what goes in Gainesboro, please access that survey. In addition to the survey, please also send emails stating your preferences for that part of the park. And please put on your calendar the recreation, the next Recreation Commission meeting, where that will be on the agenda. So we look forward to that discussion, and would hope that you could join us. On May twenty-fourth, the Recreation Commission is also hosting a bike decorating event. We did this last year at the community center. It was well-attended and a lot of fun. This year, Scott suggested that we add the bike decorating event, schedule it closer to the parade, so the kids could show off their fancy decorated bikes. So the idea is, on the Saturday before Memorial Day, to gather at the community center, I think we said ten?
It's in the newsletter, it's in the...
Yeah.
I do have it here, Jason.
Okay. Well, the idea is to have the event on Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, and then the kids, if they can keep the streamers and the bells and whistles on their bikes for a couple of days to participate in the Memorial Day Parade the following Monday. So a lot of kids will hopefully participate in that. And again, that's the twenty-fourth.
I think it's eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I think we said eleven o'clock. But I would double-check the website on that. And then the following month, in advance, Recreation Commission will be hosting a family reunion at Gainesboro Park. That'll be on Tuesday, June seventeenth. That was a lot of fun last year as well. Get everyone down there, and we did some activities and games for the kids, and everybody had a, had a really good, really good time. So that's all I have for Recreation.
Okay.
You made a question for Commissioner Krizak. The survey, is that one for home or adults and kids? Who should fill that out?
I think each individual should be able to conduct that survey. I appreciate you raising that issue, because we would encourage parents with children to go through the survey with their, with their own children, and then they could also go through the survey with their own preferences. So I would say, as many members of your household who are interested in participating in the survey should be able to access that.
Yeah, there's no IP lock on there, so you can access from the same computer more than once. And it asks, are you resident, your address, and then an age group. So we're getting an idea of who's answering it from the households at least. So you'll be able to answer more than once. We just asked that you be favored in, like Commissioner Krizak said, it's not necessarily, hey, this is the exact piece that I want, but we're getting some ideas. There are some different pieces that we have considered and looked at, and we're just really looking to get some input. It looks like right now we have about sixty respondents on that, so that's a pretty good number for right now, so we'll expect to get some more, too. So we'll expect to get some more, too.
And was June 7th the last date?
To turn in the survey?
Yeah.
I think I was gonna close it down next Friday because we were gonna be reviewing it at the next Recreation Commission meeting. So it's been about three weeks that we've had for people to be able to get.
If I could ask one more question about it? I saw the flyer, the survey is mentioned on the flyer that you passed out at the Kickstart event. Did that flyer go to each home or how have residents seen that flyer?
Those were delivered this weekend.
Oh, good.
To houses. So whether, depending on whether you got it, I think they still had a couple more out, one or two streets because they got rained on. Everybody should have that. And all the information is on the website also. And we sent it out as the e-blast last Thursday after the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought one of the most interesting, at the Kickstart event, one of the parents said they watched their child do a survey and were surprised at the answers that they gave. Wouldn't have been the answers that they would have thought they gave. So it would be really good to have the kids answering as well as the parents, you know, getting that broad... Or just let the kids answer.
Forget the parents.
Parents don't know what the kids want. Just give it to the kids and let them do it.
The bike decorating is 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock. Thank you, Scott.
I started to answer it and I got confused. I have to go back. I think I got halfway through, so it was... I didn't know whether I would walk or climb. Are there any other leads on?
There were no lounge chairs. There were no lounge chairs.
That's true.
Like poolside.
Once it's not a lounge chair, I'm lost. The next item is consideration of the following consent agenda. Resolution recognizing Wednesday, May 21st, 2014 as Volunteers' Recognition Day in the City of Pleasant Ridge. And before the second one, I wondered, Amy, if you could read that, please?
Sure. Volunteers' Day, May 24th, 2014. Whereas a basic ingredient in the foundation of this nation is the voluntary acceptance of initiative and responsibility by private citizens and voluntary organizations. And this fact is largely responsible for the progress and development of our great country. And whereas many citizens in this community contribute to the well-being of fellow residents and the welfare of all our citizens by giving tirelessly of their time and energy without desire for recognition or for personal gain. And whereas for many years, these individuals and organizations have worked quietly, often unnoticed and unappreciated by the general public. Now therefore, I, Kurt Metzger, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Ridge, do hereby declare May 24th, 2014 as Volunteers' Day in Pleasant Ridge and urge all citizens to be aware of the contributions made by our service organizational volunteer workers and to participate in and support their various programs and projects.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that there will be a volunteer dinner that evening, the 21st, at the Farina's Banquet Center in Berkeley. And Pam Bushy, who was here earlier, and Robert Campbell will be honored for their work in the City of Pleasant Ridge. The other item on the consent agenda, it's a request by the Seventh Day Adventist Church to solicit door-to-door beginning June 6th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next two items go together, so I'm just going to read both of those and then ask for a motion. First is consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, June 10th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 millage rates. And the second item is consideration of establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, June 10th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 combined city budgets and the fiscal years 2015 to 2019 five-year capital improvement plan. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, June 10th, 2014 at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 millage rates, fiscal year 2014-2015 combined city budgets, and the fiscal years 2015 through 2019 five-year capital improvement plan.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion, questions? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the proposed 2014 industrial waste control rates. Scott, can you put this along?
I can. So the IWC charges are designed to recover costs for removing increased pollutants from non-residential customers. This goes, basically, it's a charge that just gets passed on to industry. So the Oakland County Sewer Disposal System provides those fees to us and we pass those on directly to the local customers.
Mayor, I could just... Scott, approximately how many customers are we talking about?
I think it's just Walker Wire is the only one who gets it now. And they're on a minimal because they just run their offices there. I'm not sure if anybody else technically gets the charge. It's so...
I would say there's 26 properties that get the charge. It's... I know Walker Wire for sure gets it, but I think there's a couple of other... I want to say at one time it was 26. I would have to verify.
We have to verify if it's... Depending on how their water system...
Correct.
Okay.
So there's... We can verify that for you and get that over to you.
A small thing.
Not a problem. Yeah, it's a small... It's a small... Where some cities will have lots of money that hooks up with this.
It's just the businesses. It's not assigned to any residential customers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move the proposed industrial waste control charge is effective on water bills due after June 1st, 2014. Be adopted as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the language to be placed on the ballot of the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014 regarding a millage renewal for library services. Could I have a motion?
Mayor, I'm in a reading mood tonight.
Okay, good.
I move the ballot proposal which reads specifically, quote, "Shall the City of Pleasant Ridge authorize a renewal of up to one-half mil," parentheses, .5 mils, "for a period of five years, for years 2015 through 2019 inclusive, in excess of its charter authorized tax rate as reduced by Section 31, Article 9 of the 1963 State Constitution? Such additional millage to be used to provide library services? If approved and levied in its entirety, this millage would raise an estimated $66,290.90 in 2015," end quote. Be approved and forwarded to the Oakland County Clerk for placement on the Tuesday, November 4th, 2014 general election ballot.
Very well read.
Thank you.
Does there a second?
Yes.
Maybe take a vote.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item, consideration of the authorization for the acting city manager to request reimbursement of authorized expenses from the Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund.
This actually has been... This is something that has kind of died down the last few years. About six or seven years ago, it was a big... The West Nile is a big thing that was out there. It's kind of calmed itself. And part of it is to do with this program, the county reimburses us. We buy some larvaicide that we put in the catch basins that help stany water. That's where mosquitoes like to go. So we put those in all the catch basins. And the county has a program to reimburse us for those, that larvaicide.
It's a lot of money, technically.
I know. Yeah, it's a small amount, three to $500.
$346.
$346, $46. We'll take it. We need it.
That's right.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move that the acting city manager be authorized to request reimbursement for authorized expenses from the Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund as recommended.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the resolution regarding the solid waste management plan amendment.
Yes, this is an item that has... We've been talking about it at the level of Sacra and Oakland County has been dealing with this and also the Solid Waste Planning Committee that Oakland County has set up. The county has a solid waste plan that was adopted in the year 2000 that looks at solid waste in the county, how it should be dealt with, where it should be taken, and how we're going to manage that over a period of time. So the recommended length of these plans is five years typically. This plan last was updated in 2000. We're not... The county isn't much different than other counties. A lot of counties that haven't updated these plans just because of the movement to get better at recycling and being more environmentally. These plans almost haven't been able to keep up with that movement for these other cities. The part of the plan says, though, if there's a change in any of the transfer station or an addition of any type of facility that's going to deal with trash, like a type A transfer station or a waste processing facility, that has to be mentioned in the plan. So the City of Pontiac was able to reach an agreement and a deal with Rizzo, who's a trash hauler and a recycling company, about putting a type A transfer station, a waste processing facility on the old Fiero site. So, you know, it's a good deal for Pontiac. You're gonna be able to bring in some additional jobs and get some land back on the tax rolls. And Rizzo actually will give some of the money back to the city on a per-tonage basis. So the county has... The County Board of Commissioners and the Solid Waste Planning Committee approved this amendment to the plan to be able to allow this to happen. And I agree with being able to get the amendment through. I don't feel that we should hold up a thing. It could be good for Pontiac and, you know, good for the county and, you know, it'll work for everybody up in that area. The one thing that I do want to stress, and this is the same as Sacra, is that we feel that there should be a total overhaul of the plan in general. This amendment shouldn't be it. We should look at redoing the whole plan because it is time, it is overdue. So at this time, I recommend that we approve the solid waste management plan as presented and that we urge the county and the solid waste planning committee to continue with the full plan update after this amendment process is through.
Did you say to 41 communities, they had to get the approval?
Yeah, they need 41 communities to approve the plan to make it go through. So there is a gentleman here from Rizzo, Mr. Edwin Hoover, who, if you did have any additional questions that we were to answer, was kind enough to come tonight. But I think they're gonna get the approval of it. And like I said, it's just there's this idea that the plan really needs more overhaul than just this one little piece. So I think that's how a lot of the communities are gonna look at it. And that's the same as Sacra, they pass the same type of resolution.
Are there any questions from the commission? Oh, yes, please, sir.
First, let me apologize for my voice. It's not good tonight.
It's okay.
I work with Rizzo Services and Scott has done a good job. He's hit the nail right on the head. The one thing that I would urge you to, in view of the progress that's been made by Rizzo and City of Pontiac, we've crossed the three major hurdles that was mentioned. And getting two-thirds approval of the communities in Oakland County is the fourth hurdle. There's a couple of more after that, but frankly, each of them are getting a bit lower. And again, Pontiac will realize a real shot in the arm from this. Our company will, too. What the system is all about is to accept recycled products which consist of metal, paper, glass, and plastics that are sorted by homeowners and placed out for collection. The facility will accept that. And in addition, the waste that is left over after the recycled products are removed will also come to this facility where it will be loaded onto larger trucks and taken to the final disposal site, which generally is the City of Detroit Resource Recovery Facility or one of the five major landfills in the southeastern Michigan area. So in quick summary, if we're positive that the two desires, the one to approve Pontiac's plan for the MRF and the transfer station is kept separate from the other idea to have the county open the plan, that will be extremely helpful for both Pontiac and our company. And I think in order to generally have done that way.
Excuse me, sir. What was your name?
Edwin Hoover.
Okay, thank you.
Like J. Edgar, you can't forget.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, I'd be pleased to answer those.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I move the resolution regarding the Oakland County Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment be approved as recommended.
Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay. Maybe we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyjak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is the city manager's report.
Yes, I have a few items. I know some of them we've already touched on, but I'll give it again for those. Well, so we do have the Polar Plunge again on May 16th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Suggested donation of $10 or become a member of the foundation on site. And that's at the pool. Well, like I said, we'll have an activity for kids ages five and up at the community center for those that want to come. The auction on Saturday starts at 5:30. Tickets are available online at pleasantridgefoundation.org or at City Hall. The pool opens Friday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m., weather depending.
What was that?
The pool opens Friday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m. The weekend hours are Saturday through Monday, will be noon to 8:00. And those, of course, are all weather depending.
What time is that on the 23rd?
The 23rd is 4:00. 4:00 to 8:00. Yeah, yep.
Sun to...
Like maybe 3:59.
Little mayor privilege.
We'll give you a five-minute race for you to get your chair.
It's gonna be the backyard again.
You know, if you go by the pool right now, it doesn't look like it's quite there. And we're not, but we will be. We have our... Our water sample came back positive, so the health department gives us an okay to open. And we'll be ready to go by the time that Oakland gives it. Good. So it's exciting, it's nerve-wracking, it's a lot of... It's like, now it's here, so now we're forced to move on and get it going. It is an exciting time, though, once the doors open and people get to go through there. We do have the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, which is Monday, the 26th. The parade starts at 8:45, Ceremony approximately 9:00, however long it takes us to get from down Oakland Park. And we, like I said, we are inviting the kids with their bikes to come and ride in that parade. And we'll have the grand marshal and the school board members will be there like last year.
And the band?
The commission and other, like the...
The band?
And the band, yes, the band. Always the middle school band is there, so.
And a cannon.
Right, right. And the cannon is there, yeah. And actually, I think they were gonna do the... They were gonna try to fire the cannon off.
They're gonna fire it twice.
Twice.
They're gonna fire it once, once everyone gets into place, just before we start the program.
program, and then fire it at the end when we're finished with the program.
So, yeah, definitely come and just see the cannon.
Got it, more cannon.
And then one, one last thing, we started a new notification system just to be able to get people updated on things and now the new thing is to be able to send stuff directly to your phone. So, it's instant, instant gratification, I'll say. So, it's a text, a text message or an SMS update, you can, we'll be able to send those messages out for general city news. So, if you text @PRNews to the number 248-365-7220, you will be subscribed to that service. That's all on the website and I know people don't get a chance to write down those numbers. So, right in the front of the website, that information is on there to be able to subscribe to that. So, it's, it lets us get information out to you and there's no, no cost to you other than if you don't have an unlimited text plan and it's actually a service that we were able to, to get at no cost to us too. So, it's a little...
Great, thank you.
And that's all for me.
Thank you. I signed up today, so.
Good, good. I think we have 33 people signed up, so we'll get them out, we'll get a lot.
Mr. Mayor, quick question for Scott. Scott, you mentioned foundation tickets for the auction are available on their website, of course, at City Hall. Are they available at Four Ridge also?
They're not, but we're going to, since City Hall closes on Friday, we're going to have them on sale over there on Friday with, for cash and check only. You can't take credit cards. Even here, we don't take the credit cards. But if you need to pay with a credit card, you purchase them online. Cash or check are available here and then we'll have them Friday at Four Ridge.
Good to hear.
And so, Scott, online, do you do it through the Pleasant Ridge website or through the foundation?
We do it through the foundation, which is PleasantRidgeFoundation.org.
Okay.
And I will put, there's a, there's a foundation link on our website, but I'll put one on the front page for people so they can, they can get right to it easily.
And is today the last day for $40 tickets or tomorrow?
Tomorrow. I think it's tomorrow, yep.
And that goes up to 50?
And then it goes up to 50, correct.
Which is all good because it's all for...
Right, it all goes there because it does, it does help for, I always joke around with our 50-plus group that nobody ever RCPs for stuff because it makes hard for planning. So, it does help the foundation that they know a number ahead of time and that's the incentive behind it. So, please, if you plan on going, get your tickets so it helps for their catering and they know how much to order, so if you know you're going to go, grab those tickets.
Good, good. Any other questions for Scott? No? Okay, other business?
Mayor, if I could, I'm really excited to announce the next book club discussion, which is upcoming. It'll be this Tuesday, May 20th, a week from tonight. I know we have some book club members in the audience. The title is Reimagining Detroit and we have been lucky enough that the author of Reimagining Detroit, John Gallagher, has agreed to join us for the discussion. Kurt appeared in a film that was made over the last couple of years called Lean, Mean, and Green, which was based on some of the issues that are contained in this book. And Kurt has agreed to moderate along with Mr. Gallagher on the themes touched on in the book. So, we'd like to get anyone who's interested in this region and the future of this region to come out and join us on Tuesday, May 20th at 7:00 PM in the community center. It should be a really, really great discussion and I know I'm looking, really looking forward to it. So, I hope, I hope you guys can join us. Thank you.
Got anything? Nothing else?
Good, thank you.
Just a quick comment. I encourage everyone to come to special meetings. They're all open meetings. If you have questions or comments about the process and what we're doing, the open meetings are a great place to get that information. And it's an easy point to lose, but I think it helps everyone when residents attend those special meetings.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight again, you can never say too much about the auction. The auction's coming up on the 17th, right? But also to reinforce the book club, on the 20th, on the 21st is the volunteer dinner. On the 22nd is the Citizens Advisory Committee. It's the second to the last and again, I'd love to encourage anybody that wants to come and see what has gone on for the last four months and to see how a group has really put in a lot of time and effort and serious work to try to assist and to really get their arms around the budgets and planning for the city. This would be a great opportunity just to come in and more or less thank them for their work, but just to see, to get a feel as they're coming to an end, to hear those kinds of discussion. Two other things I just wanted to mention, Jay gave a great celebratory comments about some of the youth at the schools. I just wanted to say that my wife and I went to an event, the Ferndale Youth Assistance Awards. We give $1,000 to the Ferndale Youth Assistance. We are one of their sponsors. Talk about being just kind of almost brought to tears with some of the awards and the kids that were awarded. It was a wonderful ceremony. It was over at Coolidge School and they do a tremendous amount of work and the kids just listening to their stories. They, each award was kind of given a description and what they brought and these were kids from, I don't know, five was helping in Head Start programming, all the way up to 17-year-olds. Just really inspiring, so it was a wonderful event. One other thing that goes to Woodward, which some people like and some people don't like Woodward, there is going to be an event June 4th at the zoo that is going to be sponsored by the Harriet Tubman Center, a number of the church groups that are working with that, but is also going to be sponsored by them, but it's going to feature Craig Follie is going to be a moderator. We're going to have a series of panels. I agreed to be on a panel. I'm not sure what I'm going to be talking about, but it's going to be talking about the importance of transit for employment, for, for a number of issues around this region, not just the Woodward corridor, not just bus rapid transit, but why is regional transit important to bring this region together and on a whole host of areas. We're trying to get business, business, social service, the community colleges, we're getting representatives from them. City of Detroit, at least Gary Brown is coming. I'm not sure Duggan will be there. A number of mayors and others will be coming. June the 4th is at the zoo and if you want more information, I'm going to put something up on the, on the Facebook page and I'm looking forward to it. I think it'll be a great event. It will also complement work that the Woodward Avenue Action Association is doing and Michigan Suburbs Alliance is doing and a number of other groups is doing. So, that's coming up on June the 4th. And also, just to reiterate the fact that we will have a special meeting on May the 27th where we will be welcoming Jim Bruckman as our new city manager. And with that, is there any... Yes, sir, please.
John Wrightton, Kimberton, items 10 and 11, this is a public hearing.
Yes.
Does that link to all those numbers that Commissioner Perry linked on that Facebook message earlier? There seem to be budgets in there, there seem to be...
Yes.
Okay, so a person would be well advised to look at that.
Thank you.
Are those numbers that have been prepared by our CAC?
No.
No.
Those are numbers that have been prepared by the city commission and city admin, well, the city administration and, and...
And the city commission.
And the city commission, yeah.
Absolutely.
And so, yes.
So, there could be some changes there and...
So, the likelihood is that the CAC will make recommendations that affect the next budget year or things that are, that would require amendments to the current budget. For example, one of their suggestions was to look at healthcare. Healthcare is an overarching topic that's not specifically budget-related, but obviously has budget implications. So, we would look at that and then if we decided to act on it, would require an amendment of some kind to put into the budget.
So, the numbers I saw on the Facebook, that's what's happening now?
Yes.
And CAC is going to be...
Right. Those are recommendations for Woodward.
Okay.
Great question.
One other thing, as far as Commissioner Kuziak, I saw two copies of this at Royal Oak Library.
Oh, nice.
Oh, great, great. Ready to be checked out.
Great, thank you. And if someone wants to burn mine, I've already read it and mine's sitting there, so I'm more than happy to loan it.
John, John Gallagher would prefer that you buy it, but that's...
Yes.
Don't tell him I toast.
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be signing books, but probably not Royal Oak Library. Never know.
Thank you, John.
Thanks. Is there anything else?
Yes, I have something.
Yes.
I just wanted to let residents in the community know that water bills will be mailed out at the end of May, just before Memorial Day, they usually go out there, due June 25th.
Okay.
If you haven't visited our website, you are able to pay your water bill online with a credit card now.
Yes.
So, you're welcome to do that. There is another feature on the website where you can actually obtain your water balance and tax information on the website. It's free for a resident. You just have to create an account as far as looking at your information. It's kind of a process. It doesn't always take you where you think you're going to go, but once you create the account, you can look at your information for your property.
Yes, let me just encourage people, go to the website. There's constantly new, new things being added, a lot of good links, a lot of good tools are being added. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Amy, for all that you're doing to, to make it more, make it easier to pay our bills.[1699.44]